Okay, I'm going to ask people to please take their seats. We'll be starting here in about 30 seconds. I hereby call this regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Bloomington, Illinois, to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Will the clerk please take the attendance roll for today?
Alderman Milowamway. Alderman Sterns.
Here.
Alderman McGee.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Purcell.
Here.
Alderman Fazini.
Here.
Alderman Frun.
Here.
Alderman Mathie.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Mayor Stockton.
Here.
Okay, at this time, it's our practice to allow public comment on any matter that pertains to, any matter of the commenter's choice that pertains to the operation of the City of Bloomington. We limit such comments to three minutes apiece, and we have five people that wish to comment today, and the first is Alton Franklin.
My name is Alton Franklin. I live at 508 Patterson Drive here in Bloomington. A lot of things to say in only three minutes to say it. I guess I can boil it down pretty good with a lesson that I was taught and that was reiterated to me a number of times growing up. A man's word is his bond. If your actions don't match your words, there's something more than a little bit wrong. You need to address priorities and you need to own up to your responsibilities. It'd be real nice if we could all live the perfect life that we wanted, but it doesn't work out that way. There are realities. Simple point, in fact, we've got going on somewhere in the neighborhood of about $200 million of obligations. I do not understand what that is a given, why we're cutting back on the contributions to the pension funds that are already grossly underfunded. I don't understand why we're not addressing infrastructure in a more aggressive way. I've heard some good ideas coming out of some of the folks that I've talked to. There's one specific instance, and I guess I've discomfited the City Council enough that I can discomfit a few of my federal citizens as well. I believe that the park that's being discussed is something that it's not time for. There's another park a quarter of a mile away. Maybe the parents need to get out and walk with their children, get a little bit of exercise themselves. It's not just the childhood obesity that's a health problem in the nation today. There's also a lack of involvement, a lack of personal attention that needs to be addressed. You could put in a walkway there. You could put in a traffic light. There's a lot of other ways that you can address it, rather than saying, "If we don't do this, we won't get that $400,000." That's not reason enough. I am, without a doubt, one of the biggest proponents of children and the care and nurturing of children. I am not in the habit, though, of addressing wants before needs. And a simple point, in fact, is we have too many needs. We've got infrastructure that's over a century old down here. We've got other places where we've got major failings. We've got a lot of things that need to be addressed, and they don't need to be addressed by talking about talking or planning to plan. There comes a time when you gotta cut bait or fish. You gotta do something. It's not enough to talk. It's time to start acting like grownups. I look forward to a new City Council that will address the needs of the citizens and help us build a beautiful community for the citizens and especially the children that are part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Alton. The next speaker is Peggy Miles.
Thank you. My name is Peggy Miles. I live at 2212 River Woods Lane, Bloomington. Before I begin, I mean, clearly, I'm here to represent the neighbors in Eagleview. Can I just ask real quickly, who here in the room is in favor of Eagleview Park? Is that why you came here today?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. It may be that the kids in the audience need to leave before the final vote is made, and please don't take that negatively. It's kids need their bedtime and need to leave when they need to leave. Just a quick background, you all know this information. I've given you every little bit of information that I've got, but 2005, the Eagleview Park was planned on the plat map for the neighborhood, and the City of Bloomington required that six acres be donated by the builders, and the City of Bloomington purchased the other eight acres with a 50 percent Oslad grant. In 2008, the city applied for a $400,000 grant, which was ultimately approved, and we're now in the fourth year of a $400,000 grant that remains pending, and this is probably the last year that the grant will be available. In 2009, Eagleview was identified as the number-one priority on the park's master plan, and then in 2012, Eagleview is still not built because the city leaders were not able to agree on funding. We believe in you as one council to act on behalf of all citizens, to make decisions that are fair and balanced. Please don't shake my confidence in you to follow through on this eight-year-old commitment.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carl Woodward.
Sorry, you folks have to listen to me again. I'm Carl Woodward, live at 3009 Thornwood for over 30 years. I want to encourage the council to vote against the budget that's going on tonight. If the Panograph article's correct, and if I'm relying on bad numbers, I apologize. When you're showing a $6 million deficit, I like new infrastructure, and you're gonna spend a lot of money on that, and hire several employees, the prudent thing is not to hire, but freeze or reduce it. You folks must think that the economy's great and taxes are gonna generate a lot more revenue. It makes no sense at all to vote for this budget the way it is. It just doesn't. You folks have, somebody else said, have a $200 million shortfall with nothing set aside for the roads, streets, maintenance of parks, and the pension fund of $130 million. I've tried to get answers several months now without going through the FOIA request for certain numbers on pension payments. I'm still holding my breath. If I have to start using FOIA, I'll do a lot of them. I'd like to get a response. I think I'm entitled to it. So please, your budget, any third party out of town, if they also had added about the pension stuff in there, no prudent person that knows finances could vote for it. It makes no sense. I've had more than one person here call me, ask questions. I think that's great. If anything I said is wrong, or you think I'm misleading, let me know. I've read where at least one person in there thinks a lower percentage of funding the pension will have a, it'll do work better for the city, and the rating agencies will think more. That's ridiculous. That's people up here, okay? I'm not sure, as a group, not picking on the individuals, you folks know what you're doing. It appears to me, trying to get the pension thing paid for the last few years, I've done a terrible job. Do you realize to catch up on a level basis, that's over $4 million a year on the pension fund? Where are you gonna come up with that? I've tried to find out how much we paid this year through April 30th. I'm still holding my breath for an answer. Is that the way citizens should be treated? So as a summary, the prudent thing, it's not even a close call, you need to give David direction to go back and freeze the help. When someone quits or retires, don't replace them, shift people around. You're dooming our grandkids and kids by your actions to overspend the revenues on what you want instead of other things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ron Schultz.
Ron Schultz, 1208 East Oakland Avenue. I just couldn't believe, I still can't believe, that we're gonna try to hire 15 more pensions, or as you say, 15 more employees. To me, it's 15 more pensions. It just blows my mind. We have to have priorities, and 15 more people doesn't help priorities. Priorities are to pay down $130 million in pensions, as you've heard at least once today, fix the infrastructure. You know the roads need a lot of help if you drove here to the meeting. Sewers are getting old, and they are combined. Well, they're gonna have to be separated eventually. That's millions of dollars. Water needs millions to reach their goals if we're gonna go to the Mohammed Aquifer, and we will go there eventually, but we better have the money, or it's gonna be very difficult. Hiring non-public employees, non-public safety employees are kind of a kick in the face. The solution to a lot of these problems, I feel, is contracting out. You've already started into it, and contracting out, I think, is a great idea. You can even, instead of hiring 15 more people, you can probably reduce 15 people by looking at what is modern, and the modern services that are available to the city are in finance, human resources, administration, and legal, and other departments. A lot of these can be hired out without paying any pensions, using modern software in a lot of cases, and a lot of times, a lot of the work doesn't even have to be here. For instance, we do out-of-state or out-of-department billing for water at times, and I suppose possibly for legal, I'm not sure. Finally, I agree with Carl that just said, you need to work with the city manager. He can do a lot for you, but you gotta remember that he is your one and only employee, and he should be managed as such. I might add quickly that we have, from the National Tax Union, the last city manager is currently making $119,696 a year pension, and he's contributed 1.8 percent to it. John Rich is currently making $97,540 a year. He's contributed at least 4.2 percent. Richard Clem has contributed...
10 seconds.
2.3 percent, and he is making $90,000 a year. And this is just the beginning of the list. Way down at the bottom is $52,000. That's about 40 people down. These pensions are out of hand. They've got, something's got to be done, and it's gotta be done soon because our kids are gonna pay for them.
Thank you. Our last speaker for this evening is Tony Adorno.
Hi, my name's Tony Adorno. I live at 2208 Tyler Trail, Bloomington. City Council members, I appreciate your time this evening. I'm here to speak in support of Eagleview Park. A March 3 report in the Panograph said that we had $17 million in general reserve funds, and we were $2.2 million ahead of our goal for this year. I think everybody would be happy if we were $1.6 million ahead of our goal as well, and we could, and fund the park. The State of Illinois grant is giving us a 40 percent discount on the cost of this park. Why are they willing to give us $400,000 for a park? It's because it's important. It's important for the community. There's a shortage of lighted baseball and softball fields in the community to support the programs of the city. Eagleview Park represents an opportunity to directly address that problem and expand the city programs. The option of putting in a traffic signal at Tuwanda Barnes would cost about $350,000. That doesn't seem like much of a savings. We need safe places for our children to play. We need safe places on the east side of Bloomington where we're growing very quickly. The design work is already done, it's paid for, and the neighborhood has agreed on all of the elements of the park. It seems wasteful, at this point, not to build it. The pension discussion and the park discussion, I don't believe, should be talked about together. The pension issue, what we're asking for is so insignificant relative to the pension issue. I know that the city has voluntarily put in an extra half-million dollars each year to cover the cost of the pension. That's basically what we're asking for for the park. I don't understand why we can't get it. I don't think that this is a difficult decision to make. It's a fiscally responsible one. We're getting a million-dollar park at 40 percent off. I think the vote should be unanimous in support of it, and I know if it is, there'd be a lot of kids that'd be happy. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes our request for public comment for this evening. We have no items on recognition or appointments planned for this evening, so we'll move right into item number seven, which is the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are placed there by our staff in the belief that each individual item is not, it's not necessary to have separate votes or separate discussion on those items. Should any member of the council disagree or be persuaded by a member of the public that there should be separate discussion, any one member of the council can unilaterally remove that to the regular agenda for separate discussion and vote. At this time, I would ask, are there any council members that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda for separate discussion? Mboka.
I'd like to remove item 7F because it involves Illinois State University, so I could recuse myself.
Okay, and you're doing that because of potential conflict of interest, so it's a technical removal, yes? Is there anything else? Okay, I'm looking for a motion, then, to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda with the exception of 7F, which has been pulled by Alderman Milowamway.
Don't move. Second.
Moved and seconded. I would now ask the clerk to take a roll call vote on this. A yes vote is to support the consent agenda items with the exception of 7F.
Alderman Milowamway. Alderman Sterns. Alderman McGee.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Purcell.
Yes.
Alderman Fazini.
Yes.
Alderman Frun.
For both the consent and regular agenda, I do not have any personal or business interest in any of the listed items, nor have I received any financial benefits from any of the parties or organizations referenced in these specific agenda items, and I vote yes.
Alderman Mathie.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm having a little trouble with the response on the pad here. Mboka, was it your intention to vote? Never mind, never mind. On everything but. I answered my own question. Okay, the consent agenda passes. Give me just a second here to make sure this thing is reset. Okay. Okay, we're now to the former item 7F, and Alderman Milowamway has excused himself because he's an employee of Illinois State University, and this matter is a request by that body. This is a repeat application that happens every year by Illinois State University that was approved by the Liquor Commission that allows them to hold a license for the selling and serving of beer and wine only upon the premises at the Ewing Manor Shakespeare Festival. This will expire at the end of the season, and I think that pretty much takes it up to that. Is there a motion on this?
I'll make a motion that we approve the ISU request for the Shakespeare Festival liquor license.
I'll second that motion. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions? Okay, will the clerk please take a roll call vote? A yes vote is to approve the license for Illinois State University.
Alderman Sterns.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Purcell.
Yes.
Alderman Fazini.
Yes.
Alderman Frun.
Yes.
Alderman Mathie.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Okay, we can ask the alderman to step back in. The next item on the regular agenda is something that we have been preparing for for some time, and that is the 2014 fiscal year budget for the City of Bloomington, is proposed to be approximately $168 million. Work on this started, actually, late last summer by staff, and City Council has had retreats. We've had a Citizen Voice meeting for informal comments by public specifically on the budget, and we did hold a public hearing at the last council meeting on this matter and received public input. Tonight, we need to consider this because this new budget will take effect May 1st of this year, and by law, we have to have a budget in place. I do have a few comments on the budget before we move on. I do want to start by saying that anybody that has seen the budget documents, hundreds and hundreds of pages, knows that it's very complex, and I have to say that it is likely that there is something in those hundreds and hundreds of pages that just about everybody up here might not totally agree with. However, we have to have consensus, and we have to have a budget, so there needs to be compromise. A serious disagreement with the budget can be worked out in the various meetings that we've had. As I said, we've had retreats and so on, and the budget can be amended, so somebody can offer an amendment to try to add or take something out. If you disagree, try to make it better, but we need to be careful in voting on the budget that we don't throw out the baby with the bathwater. In other words, don't turn down the budget just because of a minor issue, because remember that the budget funds a lot of important things, and technically, by voting against the budget, you're voting against things like police and fire protection and things like that. So I would urge council members to try to come to compromise and support the budget because there's the overwhelming majority of the things in there, I think we all agree upon. I also wanted to say that regarding issues like added infrastructure and pension funding, which we've heard about, and we heard some speakers today talk about, remember that we are in the midst of months and months of work on a complex assessment of our streets, sewers, water, parks, city facilities, and also a plan by an actuary to look at our pension funding, not just on an individual pension, but something that considers all three pensions taken collectively. It's gonna be worth all the work because that's gonna give us a comprehensive picture of all those obligations and how we can, and allow us to set priorities and decide how much funding we're gonna need. Now, if we vote on the budget tonight, that is not necessarily final. Remember, this council always has the right to amend the budget in the future. The new council after May 1st can, in fact, make certain amendments, and we do expect that the pension study is going to be complete, what, David, in September? Is that our target?
Yes.
So there should be recommendations, including a set of principles that we need to follow in funding the pension, to do so fairly and to complete our obligations, as several people have said. And also, it'll provide us with some alternative funding ideas that take account of all three pension plans collectively. So I just want to remind you that whatever we do tonight needs to be a consensus, it needs to fund vital activities, and lastly, it can be flexible, and as things change, as we get additional revenue, as we see additional expenses or expenses that do not have to be made, and staff has always been very good at that, not spending every dollar that we have, that this budget is flexible and can be a living document, so to speak. And lastly, and David, I'd like you to comment on this, too. We attended last week a meeting where some remarkable numbers were being thrown around that the City of Bloomington's retail sales were up by 20, almost 22 percent over the previous year, which is a remarkable recovery from their session. Now, not all of that is subject to sales tax, and I think, what, I think, David, our actual sales tax numbers appear to be up around 15.9 percent, which, if you look at that, that is far and away of other communities. We are far outstripping other communities in that percentage of gain, so that's a very, very healthy sign, and I think that bodes well for having a... So that's a very, very healthy sign, and I think that bodes well for having a flexible budget and being able to do some more things in the future. Anything else, David? Or why don't you go ahead and introduce the remainder of it?
Thank you, Mayor. First, let me just acknowledge again, you know, the hard work of our city staff, including Patty Lynn Silva, the new finance director, who's been here less than a year. She's helped to kind of direct this effort. Tim Irvin, all the directors, and many members of our staff. It has really been a very significant and dedicated service that they've been going through to put this together. Mayor, as you mentioned, the budget document, I think if you would compare this to what you were getting four or five years ago, I think staff has made tremendous progress to provide you and the public with a much more open, transparent, detailed budget with performance measures, indicators. And as you say, when I got here, we had over 60 governmental funds. We've reduced that about in half. We've made tremendous progress trying to rebuild a number of our reserves and fund balance. We still have a couple we're working on, but I think it is this council that has overseen the tremendous strides made in rebuilding and returning the city to a very strong financial condition, which has been recognized by the credit rating agencies, as we've seen our credit ratings go up. We're only one step away from a AAA credit rating, and that is phenomenal to see, you know, just the progress made. Mayor, as you mentioned, the capital improvement program. When I came here, we had, I believe it was probably just one, capital improvement master plan, the parks. Pretty soon, you're going to see sanitary sewer, you're going to see storm drain. We're working on water, we're working on transportation and others. These will be 20-year capital improvement master plans. I think it's important to point out that even though numbers are thrown out like 1, 200 million, these are estimates. And until you see these master plans and the public sees this, we will not know the definitive total of what the long-term need is, but neither will we have until we see the report, what the priority is. And frankly, I think it's going to be very important for this council to look at all capital improvements together once we update those, and then you have the tough decision in balancing capital improvements with operating expenses. This budget has over $16 million in capital expenditures, and that's on top of just the 10 million Locust Colton CSO separation project, probably one of the largest projects that I think the city has seen. This has included new water mains, new sewer mains, new stormwater, and elimination of CSO, which if we don't address them, we could, you know, face the wrath of the EPA. But we have made great progress, so I think it's important that the public understand that this council has made a serious commitment to infrastructure. We've seen our street resurfacing go from, I saw a 10-year stretch here where maybe a half million dollars was being spent in the 90s, 2000. We're now at $4 million each year in street resurfacing, and that's without property tax increases and other sacrifices. We have a very lean staffing. We've eliminated over 100 full-time employees since the recession. Yes, we're trying to bring back a couple of key positions, but you can only squeeze so much blood out of a tournant, and that's what we have to keep in mind on our employees. We've asked more than a fair share of them the last four years. You cannot continue to ask an unreasonable, you know, burden on our employees. Believe me, I know, I see the impact it's having on employees' health, family relationships, and everything else, and you can only go so far. But even with that, we've made tremendous progress. I think it's also, as you mentioned, even though we've given you some previous fund balance, general fund balance projections based on the last four to six months, we do think those numbers will be eclipsed, and we could very well be seeing an extra half million to a million dollars in actual sales tax receipts when we ultimately calculate the fiscal year 2013 final numbers. Now, again, things can change. I believe also we've been very diligent and very aggressive in asking both our governor and our state legislators to not solve state fiscal problems on the backs of cities, towns, and counties. They have a fiscal mess, they need to solve it, just like we took it upon ourselves with your leadership, to restore this city's financial situation to a very healthy level, including recognizing the impact that costs are having on our residents. The council provided some property tax relief with a $400,000 reduction in property tax levy, and I think that is a very great token or significant action, given the fact that we are seeing some of our revenue in other areas like sales tax beginning to come forward. And Mayor, like you indicated, yes, pensions is a concern, but the city of Bloomington has always made its annual required contribution, and furthermore, I think you've got to keep in mind, this council does not set pension benefit levels. They have to pay for it by levying the property tax. It's the General Assembly that decides the benefit levels for the pensions, and we all have to be much more aggressive in having our General Assembly become and to address, you know, the pension situation. The five pension systems that you keep hearing about is what the state of Illinois is on the hook for, but we have to pay for the police, the fire, and the IMRF. I might want to mention too, as we were trying to get some answers to the question, I think it's helpful to point out that based on our finance director's research with the executive director of the IMRF, we are seeing our funded ratio on IMRF go up. It had been in the 30s, it's now over 50%. We're asking them to make an apples-to-apple comparison of truly where is the IMRF funded ratio? We're being told that could be in the neighborhood of 70% to 80% when you make an apples-to-apples comparison, and it's that pension fund that really controls, you know, more than half of the city employees. So it's in much better fiscal condition than even the police and fire. Mayor, like you said, this budget, I think, is a reasonable budget, given all the concerns. It is consistent with this council's priorities of focusing on public safety and those needs. Half of those new positions are in police and fire to address the ongoing needs we have there. The infrastructure and the infrastructure improvements like street resurfacing, it's constantly gone up in the last four years, and you will hear more in the water supply update. But one reason we're able to move ahead in the very near future on the Southwest Well Field is because with your approval, water rates have been adjusted to help build in a very sizable water fund reserves, such that we might even be able to self-fund, pay for a lot of those improvements because you've been prudent in helping to build up those funds. So I for one, and yes, I may take credit as the recommendation, but it is truly a team effort. I think anyone who feels that there ought to be more expenditures made need to also propose where do we take money away from programs? Because to have the high quality of life that we have in this city, which we want to maintain, we don't want to see it go down, we want to see it improved. It's critical for economic development, it's critical to retain businesses that we have so they don't leave, and I think it's critical that everyone here, whether it's for a park, for good streets, good infrastructure, we have to continue to make these investments. And I think this recommended budget is a great balance for this upcoming fiscal year of trying to meet your priorities and also deal with what's realistic from the standpoint of what the city can do this upcoming year. So Mayor, I just want to leave with you that I strongly recommend to the council tonight, this budget. It has incorporated, as you've seen in the backup, the one change dealing with the Lutz Road design, we've incorporated that, and I would recommend the ordinance for the fiscal year 2014 budget be approved tonight by the city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
And before we go to that, one thing that has come up, we hear a lot, are the additional employees. Would you please comment on where we stand on number of employees today versus where we were pre-recession when we began aggressive cutting of employees? You've talked about the workload, but we've also, we're starting to see growth in the city again. We're seeing calls, some of the people that have spoken against additional employees are the same people that have asked, we need increased transparency and public access and so on. Please comment on that before we move ahead.
And Emily, you'll need to kind of nod your head, and Patty, it seems to me that just before the recession and right after, we have cut somewhere in the neighborhood of 100 to 120, 130 full-time positions. So even with adding back, like in this year, about these 15 positions, we're still about 100 plus or minus full-time positions down from where we were back in the pre-recessions. I don't know of any other city that has gone as lean as we have, but made the rebound and has been trying to do more with less, but it's, you know, it's, so hopefully those numbers will help. Is that kind of what you're looking at?
That sounds, I think the number I was thinking of was around 131, and yes, we're starting to bring some back because of renewed growth and some new needs, but we're still going to be well over 100 below where we were in the past. Okay, with that, unless you have anything else, David? I would ask, do we have a motion? Rob?
I make a motion that we approve the budget as presented, and I would like, after we have a second to that, to be able to speak to it. But I make the motion now.
I second the motion. Okay, it's removed and seconded that we approve the budget as presented. At this time, I would ask if anyone has any comments? Rob, you're the first here.
Thank you. Two people have held up the two books. It's 661 pages, by the way. The reason I know that is I spent two hours with the city manager, the finance director, and other staff people going through it page by page. That's what you get when you put a banker on your city council, just how it works. I also serve on the alderman committee that is administration and finance, and one of the main purposes and functions that we're performing is to look at the pension plan. We brought in outside consultant to help us look at that. We have a finance director who has experience in this, and I'm confident that by September, we're going to have a long-range plan for the pensions that's going to be the envy of other cities and other communities in this state. I've also talked to all of our state elected officials, state senators, state representatives. We're fortunate to have four of those, and they're willing to help us with ours, and they're looking forward to seeing what we develop so they can go to their other communities and use it as a model. We will not just solve what should we put in our pension one year. We're going to be looking at the whole 30 years, and we will have a good pension, solid plan for making sure that when the money is needed, it'll be here. Now, the state of Illinois may or may not give us a number that we like. I'm confident we're going to exceed whatever the state of Illinois asks us to put in, and we will budget for it. It's not going to be necessarily in the budget that we see right here. This budget shows how much we need to put in. We probably will be making adjustments going forward. The mayor mentioned that we had a good rating, a 15% increase in sales tax. Let me put that in perspective for you. All the communities in the state, we were the highest. The second place was a town a little bit to the north of us, and their rating, they had a 5% increase. The next community had a four-point something, and the one after that a four-point something. We were three times as good as anybody. We have to be proud of that, and we'll use that money wisely. The people increases, the city manager and the mayor both mentioned we've gone down over 130. Out of those 15 people, I think, city manager, you said that almost half of them are city and fire, I mean, city, are police and fire.
Yes.
Yeah. And when we're looking at those, we're not just looking at how much more money we're going to have to put in our budget, we're going to reduce overtime by as much as we're increasing salaries, if I'm not mistaken. Does that sound right? Yeah. So we're going to be increasing most of those 15 people with no increase in total expense to the city. It'll also reduce the amount of overtime, which is putting real stress on the people who are having to work all that overtime. So it'll accomplish two things. It will let us reduce the stress on the people that we depend on for our safety, and it will be revenue neutral. So don't look at that number of 15 as, oh goodness, we're getting out of hand again. We're not getting out of hand. Every one of those increases is for a very good reason. That project that the city manager talked about, where we were separating the Colton project, if we had tried to do that project in 2009 when the city manager got here, we would not have been able to do it, and here's why. We wouldn't have had the money. We had to spend $10 million. The government is going to give us $2.5 million back, the federal government. Is that right? Right. And the interest rate on the loan, was that 1.9%? Yeah, somewhere around 2%. So we're getting such a sweet deal, it's unbelievable, but we would not have been able to do it if we weren't a double A-plus rated city. We wouldn't have had the money, we would have had to pass that up. So by cutting people and doing all the things we did, we put ourselves in a position to be able to take advantage of a federal program, and if we didn't take advantage of it, city manager was right. The EPA forced the city of Peoria to do some projects that it wasn't ready to do, didn't have a choice, had to do them, didn't get a 25% discount, did not get a 2% rate. They had to do it at the current rate. Now, because we are financially sound, we can do things. We can increase 15 people without increasing much in the way of expense. We can improve our pensions as soon as we have a good, solid plan. I wouldn't vote for an increase in pension funding right now unless I knew it was going to work over 30 years. We're working on that, we will have that, and we will make the adjustments in the budget. So I'm for the budget, even though there's some things in here, one of them in particular, I really don't like, and I did my best to convince my friends up here, and they didn't agree with me. My problem. I guess I have to be a better salesman, but I didn't get what I needed, but I'm going to vote for the budget because that one item isn't enough, that $350,000 that I wanted to save, it isn't enough to have me not vote for it. We're doing, on your behalf, what we need to on the budget, and I support it fully. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Stephen?
Well, thank you, Rob, for explaining all that. We only put 3.1 million for police pension funds in this year and 2.9 for fire. There is $130 million in unfunded obligations, part of that 39 million for Illinois Municipal League, Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, 37 for police, 37 million, 37 million for fire, and 18 million for healthcare. It's as pay-as-you-go, but it still has to be paid to the retirees. If you divide that by 27 years, that's $4.8 million catch-up a year. So I mean, that's some serious money. And we probably only put a couple hundred thousand dollars extra in this year. I haven't got a number from David, but I don't know how much extra we put in catch-up, but probably not quite enough. So my feeling is pensions before parks, okay? Take the money that we found for the park and put it into the pension, the $600,000, and not hire the extra seven people, but just public safety, and I could go for the budget. Other than that, I cannot support the budget because it does not take care of the pensions in the future. There's 120 to 130 million dollars looming there, and we are not catching up at all.
David?
Just a couple of quick comments, because, David, first of all, I think you did a nice job of putting some exclamation points on some very successful measures. job of putting some exclamation points on some very successful measures that we've seen here at the city the last few years. You were talking fast, and a lot of that, I'm sure, kind of got past most folks in the room, but what's been accomplished by you and your team the last four years is amazing. I'm just going to highlight a couple of really minor points, because you and Rob have hit most of the major points. Of the positions that are in the budget to be added, the non-public safety positions, again, those that aren't police and fire, I think by council directive, and you have agreed to, our first look will be to contract those employees. We're not hiring full-time employees for those non-public safety positions. We're not hiring X number more pensions, okay? The first thing, what we will do first, and primarily, is to look to contract those other additional employees. So again, I've heard, I sit here and I've heard several times now, "Well, you know, we're assuming all this pension liability for these new positions." No, we're not, not for the non-public safety, because we're going to contract those employees first. And again, appreciate your help and your willingness to work with the council in that respect, because you understand the business implications of that, of being able to do that. The other thing, and Steve alluded to, and as you did, David, the improvement in the credit rating, and that is obviously worthwhile. The other thing is the budget process that you and your team have put in place since you've been here. Again, I think this has been a year or so ago, but that process, while again, it produces a complex document, the process that you and your team have put in place has been nationally recognized. Is that correct by some national organization around the formulation and presentation of the city of Bloomington budget? Is that correct?
Correct. We got an award from the GFOA. The budget document, I think the first one was a year ago, did receive the Budget Excellence Award, and there's not that many, you know, more cities get the GFOA annual financial report, but not as many go after the Budget Excellence Award. And that is correct, that we just received that two years ago, and...
And again, I'll just wrap up by saying, and again, my colleagues have heard me say before, the important things you say more than once, because they're important things. And the work that your team has done around the budget process and the overhauling of the budget process that was here previously is nothing short of amazing. And I too will support the budget. Am I in agreement with every page? No. Do I think that we have, we have not had the hard conversations about the priorities that we need to have? Absolutely. But I finally have realized that simply, as Rob alluded to with some of his conversations, I understand now that we're not going to have that conversation about the priorities. David, I believe as the city manager, you've done the best without clear counsel, consensus, and direction. I believe you and the staff have done, again, an exceptional job managing the priorities as, the competing priorities, as you see them in creating a budget document. And again, I will support it. So thank you for your efforts, as well as those of your team.
Jay?
I'm going to try not to prolong this, because it's been a half an hour for a couple people to speak, but I will point out my position on the budget. And I will say, Mr. Mayor, that with all due respect, I'm not going to violate my conscience, nor am I voting against all of the good things in the city of Bloomington. If, looking back at our state, just for instance, most of us understand the dire financial condition, and who among us has not thought, "Oh, if only one of our state legislators would have voted no to all this pension expansion." But we find ourselves in the position we're in today, because the majority has a tremendous amount of power, the majority rules, and certainly has the, certainly has the public speaking, the, I'm trying to think of its phrase, and I can't think of it right now, but they have the pulpit. And I, as a lowly Alderman, one in the minority, really don't, I don't really have that per se, but I do have this, and I highly encourage any of you out there, if you'd like a copy, ask me. It's in the questions. It's in, and it's something that isn't just me. It's Carl Woodward, and thank you, Carl. It's Bruce Meeks, who spoke at the public hearing. It's Alton Franklin. It's Lane Hanson. These are people that I consider to be my boss. Now, maybe somebody got up and said, "Gee, I'm really glad you guys aren't funding the pensions," but I missed that person. I'm going to conclude by going over the, my statement on the budget, the most important part, it isn't me. I'm not a financial guru. I don't even work in finance. I do run a small business successfully. And when I'm out of money, I'm out of money. There is no going to the taxpayers. So I understand that concept. I also understand that in the future, yes, we will have a plan for pensions, and the only possible funding mechanism I can see is higher taxes and higher fees, and it will be a lot higher, a lot higher. So for these lovely little children, and they're all adorable sitting here tonight, and I applaud every one of you for bringing them, if they stay in the city of Bloomington, and I hope they do, they're going to have a payday that will not be sustainable, that will not be payable, when they have a $30 million pension contribution that the Panograph alluded to not long ago. Fitch is a bond rating agency that rates cities. And here's what they said about the city of Bloomington in February of 2013. Pension funding levels are very low, with increased funding levels likely creating financial pressure in the future. That will be the payday I'm talking about. In their credit profile, they cite weak, quote, "weak pension funding." They further state, "The city participates in three pension plans, all of which are poorly funded." Finally, Fitch states in their narrative, "Fitch views these pension plans as a credit concern for the city, and any material deterioration in funding levels could apply negative pressure to the rating." The next paragraph, again, I'm concluding, goes on to cite the fact that our pension funding is falling. To say that we don't have the option of funding our pensions is absolutely, you know, not the case. We certainly have that option, and I have strongly supported year after year, and I'm in the minority, I understand that, that we fund these pensions. We've promised them to our police, our firefighters, those who put their lives on the line for our public safety. And I have expressed this over and over. It was expressed at the public hearing two weeks ago. My opinions have been expressed. I simply cannot, you know, I cannot change a budget that's been in the works, and I understand that. But I think it's my moral duty and my fiduciary duty to the future taxpayers in the city of Bloomington not to support what a major bond rating agency told us we should not do. And thank you very much, and that's all I have to say.
Any other comments?
David? Just one question. As it relates to the next agenda item, the budget that we are voting on does not include Eagleview Funding. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So what will happen, kind of administratively, is if we approve the budget, and then on the next item, if that is approved, we will basically back $600 out of our reserve fund to cover the cost, and reallocate that to Eagleview Park. Is that correct?
In the current fiscal year?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we deliberately separated the two, because they're really two separate issues and two separate budget years. Jamie?
You know, I was, I've been looking through the budget for months, just like everybody else has too, and I do have to say that I'm not happy with the amount of money that we're putting towards our pensions right now. However, I do realize that we need a plan, and that we're working on that plan, and we're moving forward with that plan. So I am in support of the budget, knowing that we have a plan coming this September, but after that plan's put in place, and once we agreed on it, that plan will be paramount to me, that we follow that plan, and we're either meeting or exceeding every year consistently payments towards that pension fund. The only other comment I was going to make, too, is I, like David said, I really agree or appreciate your willingness to look at contract employees fulfilling those positions, because I think that's important towards our long-term goals as well. Thank you.
Rob?
Jamie, I'll clarify one thing, since we're working on that plan in our committee. One of the critical elements is that whatever our policy is, we will meet it. Not we may, not we might, we absolutely will. Otherwise, we jeopardize our bond rating agency, cost ourselves more money for borrowing. It's not an option. Whatever it is, we will meet it. And we're fortunate to have a large reserve now, so that if we're short for some reason, we can fund it. But that policy will be met under every circumstance.
Okay, I see no further comment, therefore I'm going to put this to a vote. The motion is to approve the city budget as proposed by staff. If you agree with that, a yes vote is appropriate. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll call?
Alderman Millamway.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
No.
Alderman McDay.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Frisell.
No.
Alderman Sazini.
Yes.
Alderman Fruin.
Yes.
Alderman Mathie.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
The budget for the fiscal year 2014 has been passed as proposed by staff. That now brings us to something I know a lot of people out here have been waiting for. This is item 8B, which pertains to an amendment to the current budget year, not the 2014 that we just talked about, but the current budget year, to spend, to authorize spending of up to $600,000 for Eagleview Park. Now, we just got through talking about all the obligations, and there are many obligations, pension and infrastructure and so on, but we're slowly working our way down the list, just completing a $10 million storm sewer project, for example, which is not insignificant for the city of Bloomington. Morris Avenue and Tanner Street is another project that has been around for a long time. So there's a lot of things that we have done. However, I believe that some of those obligations include things like parks that we have in the past said that, or at least implied that we're going to build. Now, we certainly didn't commit to an exact time commitment, but I don't think anyone can say that we never had any commitment or do not have any commitment to ever build these parks. After all, we accepted land from the developers. We certified our intention to fund and build two parks when we applied for a grant to the state of Illinois for matching funds, and we allowed developers to at least imply our intention to build the park by posting signs and telling would-be buyers that a park would soon be built. Now, I do have an issue a little bit with the fact that the "soon," but as I said, I think there is a commitment there. That leads me to the conclusion that we have become obligated to eventually build these parks. And last year, the council agreed and did authorize one of them, Gaelic Park. Now we're faced with the other, and I'm further convinced that there is no better time to meet this commitment that we're going to have to meet eventually than right now. And the reason is that, yes, if we spend $600,000 on this park, that's $600,000 that we can't spend on other things. I agree with that. And we have to make a lot of decisions like that, priorities. My concern is, however, if we say, "Let's kick the can down the road, maybe we'll build it next year," it is likely that we could lose a state grant. And if we kick it down the road to next year, that will be $1 million in other projects, $1 million that we can't spend on other projects. In years after that, if we kick the can further down the road, there's going to be construction cost increases. So that leads me to the conclusion that if we're going to do it, if we have any intention of ever doing it, this is the time to do it, when we get that, as somebody said, a 40% discount. Now, I personally don't like the idea of being painted into a corner because of an acceptance of a grant, and, you know, we also accepted land from a developer, what, eight years ago, to build this park. But we do have to play the cards that we have been dealt. And I think right now, the best play on the cards is to go ahead and get this behind us when it's cheaper to do so. However, there's a couple of things I would hope that we would learn from this. Number one, when we apply for a grant that requires substantial funding at some future date, I think we should consider setting up a reserve fund to meet that obligation in the future, so it doesn't become a one-time, "Oh, we've got it, what year do we put this big expenditure in?" That might also have the advantage, if we start funding something right away, make the council, at the time they vote for it, think about, you know, "We're going to have to start funding this right now," rather than thinking, "Oh, we'll just leave that to somebody eight years down the road." The other thing that I think we really need to look at is the whole concept of, can we continue to afford a neighborhood park in every neighborhood? A subdivision, say, with 200 homes, if we spend $1 million on that park, that's $5,000 a home that we're investing in that park. And remember, we're collecting on the average home in the city, what, $450, $500, even on a larger home, maybe $600 or $700. And that goes for other services, too. I don't think that the city can afford any longer parks in every subdivision. So I think for the future, commitments that we have not made, that should be reexamined. So I'm urging you, as your mayor, to minimize the long-term cost of all of our expenses, and especially Eagleview Park, by taking, by going ahead and getting this out of the way when it's cheaper. And secondly, learning from this and looking at some possibilities as to how we can avoid being painted in the corner in the future. So with that, David, would you like to go ahead and add some things?
Let me just add one or two points. One, I just want to reiterate again, in the budget workshop we had on a Saturday, we did give you an updated spreadsheet showing our calculation of the general fund, unreserved fund balance, and how we did have sufficient funding there to allocate towards the city's portion of this project, $600,000. As I mentioned earlier, we do even feel, based on our sales tax receipt collections, that that general fund reserve number will even increase as we get to the end of the fiscal year. I think it's important to point out that anytime we look at any of these fund balances, and especially in the general fund, even our policy says these reserves should be used for one-time expenditures, like a capital expenditure, which this is. We don't want to begin to draw and utilize those for operating expenses. So I believe it is consistent with our policy of trying to use it for a one-time fixed asset type of expenditure. And as the mayor has indicated, I do believe that the time is right, as we even continue to see contractor bids, this is a very, it's a good timing for construction and labor costs, because the, yes, while the economy's picking up, labor costs are still very low, maybe as low as we're going to see, more likely they're going to increase. And like the mayor says, at some point in time, if we don't follow through, there is the possibility of losing the 40% funding from the AusLAD grant. I think it's important to point out that since the recession, since I've been here, we have not submitted any other AusLAD application requests, mainly because of our financial situation. We've tried to resolve and to bring to some closure those two outstanding AusLAD grant applications, Gaelic Park, and now this last one's AusLAD. So, you know, with your leadership and guidance, we have not sought any other AusLAD grant requests. You know, this will be the last, and by approving it tonight, it guarantees that if in the future, when there- future, when there is an opportunity to look at additional funding, we preserve, you know, a good, positive relationship with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. They've been very gracious to give a couple of extensions of this, but they're always looking for results. They want to make sure that if they approve a grant request, that we'll follow through. And even as it's been pointed out, we made past commitments that we had the funding to see this through. And typically, you would see it through the original grant term, but we've exceeded that several times. So, Mayor, like you, I would strongly recommend that the council approve the funding for the Eagleview Park, and that's in the form of an ordinance. This budget amendment will transfer $600,000 from the general fund to the capital improvement fund to match the city's portion of this project with $1 million as the cap. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions the council might have on the ordinance or this matter. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation that the staff recommendation be accepted.
You're making a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. I would like to make the motion that the staff recommendation be accepted and the prepared ordinance be adopted. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt the staff position to go ahead and amend the 2013 budget to include $600,000 for the construction of Eagleview Park. Now is the time for discussion. Stephen?
Well, I'm trying to make this as short as possible. Pensions before parks. And the reason I say that is, 25 years from now, when people want to retire, that we promised, when we hired them here at the city, that money may or may not be there for their paycheck, okay? Because there has to be four and a half million dollars more each year put in to make up that difference right now. And this $600,000 could be a start in the right direction. If we have extra money, we should be putting in the pensions. We won't have money to build any future parks if this is passed tonight, because there'll be four and a half million dollars every year put in to catch up on the pensions, okay? This is serious, I'm not joking around here. I have four children, and they have five grandchildren, the two oldest. Six years old, two of them six, two of them two, one, two, two and a half, in six months. And today, he could just sit up in the bed by himself. When he's old enough, and he lives in Charleston, when he's old enough to go to work, he would be old enough to collect, his dad would be old enough to collect a pension, okay? So what I'm saying is, this money set aside for pensions for police, fire, and our city workers is important. And by passing something like this without putting the money in the proper place, I think you're being irresponsible. So I'm going to vote no on this, not because I hate parks, not because I hate kids, I love kids, I play with my grandkids all the time, I've taken them to parks in many places, I've been a champion of the skateboard park. When nobody else seemed to wanted to have one on the west side, we got it together, and the council did get behind it. And we have a skateboard park, and if you go by there any afternoon, there'll be 20 to 30 kids out there skateboarding. And we have one park in this town, and we wouldn't have that if some skateboarders wouldn't have pushed really, really hard for $130,000 to do that. Wasn't a state grant, it was just the money that we put together. And it got, tried to get derailed at the last minute, because I guess they thought they didn't need it. So I'm going to vote no on this, not because I'm against parks, because this money should go elsewhere. Thank you.
David, a couple of, I guess, clarifying questions. You alluded to this, but again, we talked about it in the budget workshop, so that we have kind of full disclosure here, so everybody in the room here is the same thing, that the capital expenditure for this park will be capped at $1 million. That may or may not build the park as it's designed, but it will be capped at $1 million. Is that correct?
Exactly. That's what the budget, and this budget amendment sets a cap at a million. And as you know, the plan, if it was fully built out, would cost more than a million. But we have looked at delaying to some future unspecified time, certain improvements in that park that we just felt, you know, could not, you know, stay within the million dollars. So yes, $1 million will not get the entire park built, but I think all the residents, if they've seen the maps in that, we have specifically identified portions of the park that will have to wait for future funding. But it will comply with the OSLAD grant application and commitment. The state's looking for a million-dollar expenditure, cash or in kind, that's what we have to meet to ensure that we get use of the $400,000.
So this will not be the first and only request for capital expenditures for Eagleview Park? Do I understand? Is that what you're suggesting? It's going to build, the million will build the initial phase, there are future phases that will require additional capital expenditures. Is that correct?
Correct. But they're going to have a very substantial park built, even with the million dollars.
Okay.
But any future expenditures will have to compete with all other parks, recreation projects that are found in the park's master plan, and that'll have to compete, just like with all the other infrastructure master plans that are, will be coming the council's way, you know, and they'll all have to compete against one another.
The other point, and you alluded to this, David, and I think it has been a worthy principle that we've had, and it is these one-time expenditures for these reallocations out of the general fund. Now, again, during the budget workshop, while it was suggested that the operational expense, the expense to maintain this park compared to what it is now, and basically now, it's a greenfield, while it was suggested that the increased operating expenses would be, I don't know, a few bucks in trading stamps, the reality is, is it will take thousands of dollars more to maintain this park once it's built, thousands more than we're paying right now to maintain it. Would that be an accurate summary of what we talked about at the budget workshop?
No doubt. There will be operational expenses that will come with any new facility like this, yes. The operating budget will have to absorb that. I think at one time, our parks and directors tried to identify that, I just can't think of what that is. Of course, in this upcoming fiscal year, most of the expenditures will be construction-related.
Right.
And even until some of the turf gets in. So the, more of the operating expenditures will show in the following fiscal year, fiscal year 2015.
My point is, when we think about the total cost of the park, we have the capital expenditures, the startup, if you will, and we have the ongoing, the maintenance or operational expenses. So it is a little bit more than a million dollars that we're talking about tonight.
Capital and operating.
Yes, capital and operating, a total cost, if you will. And so again, appreciated Stephen's comments. I likewise will be voting no in a few minutes when we vote for this, but appreciate that additional line of sight around the operational expenses, as well as, I wanted to make sure that everybody in the room understood that the million dollars is the cap at this point, may or may not build the design, as was presented in the master plan a few years ago. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I could just, one follow-up. I do want to say, too, that this, going forward, it is one of our practices to institute on an ongoing basis, you know, and again, we've been short of staff to do that. But every time we see a big capital expenditure like this, we want to also give the council, what's the future operating expense going to be? What's going to be that long-term kind of replacement cost? We just haven't had the ability to do that. So we do see that as a comprehensive, you know, ongoing practice we want to implement on, especially these big capital improvement-related projects in the future.
But I do want to underline one thing that David just said, that staff will, in fact, take steps to work with the bids to assure that the city's portion is no more than $600,000. That's all we're authorizing here. And there is a possibility that something that is even in the trim-back thing might not get built as you do that, because we're only authorizing $600,000, correct?
Yes. City funds $600,000, the grant $400,000, $1 million cap on the total project.
Okay, thank you. Karen?
I want to, first of all, acknowledge the comments, Stephen, that you've made. I appreciate them, I understand where they come from, we've heard them from some of our citizens this evening as well. And I agree, we have a promise that we've made with our pensions, and I'm very confident that we're going to meet that promise. When I put myself in the, and I've gone back and forth and really thought about this, and I've appreciated the input I have received from the residents around the park, as well as others in this community. When I put myself in the shoes of the people who, many of whom are represented here tonight, I also think that we've made a promise to them. And I can see that in, basically, in everything that you've outlined, Mayor. Everybody who has built out there or bought out there has said that they've made that investment based on the information that they were given, and I think we have to make good on that, and I do intend to support the park.
Rob?
I think I'll start with pensions. We didn't make a promise to pay the pensions, we made a legal obligation to pay the pensions. The only way we're not going to pay the pensions, and Mayor, I have to apologize right now, Stockton, California, has filed bankruptcy, they won't have to pay their pensions. But that's it. Unless we file bankruptcy, we will pay these pensions, period. Now, the reason that I'm going to vote for this, two things, and both of them start with quality. The first one is quality of life. People come to our community because of the quality of life. We increase our population about 1,000 a year because of quality of life. Those people pay property tax and sales tax and other fees, and that helps our city grow so that we don't have to pay higher sales tax on what we already own. The second one is even more important, it's the quality of the city of Bloomington's reputation. And there are three parts to that. Our reputation to our citizens, and I'm going to give you eight quick points. We allowed a sign that that park was coming in 2005. We accepted 6.15 acres from the developer, free from the developer, in 2005. We put parks as the number-one priority in 2007, and this is one of the two parks. We applied for an OSLAD grant in 2007. We then purchased 8.1 acres from the developer and received an OSLAD grant for over $120,000 for that purchase. We received $400,000 OSLAD grant in 2009, a commitment. We extended that grant twice, once in 2011, once in 2012. There will be no OSLAD grants given to the city of Bloomington for two years if we don't take this. Those are promises that I think were made to citizens. We also promised the state of Illinois. We applied for the grant and received it, and we said at the time, we had the money to fund it. They gave us a grant for $120,000 because we bought eight acres from the developer. And we applied for two extensions and got both of them. I think our reputation with the state of Illinois would be harmed if we don't do this. The third thing is, we made promises to the developers, and we need developers. We allowed that sign to go up, and you all saw it. And you know who put it up. It wasn't the city, it was the developer. We're harming the developer's reputation if we don't stand behind them. We accepted the donation of 6.15 acres from the developer to build a park. They're not going to be real happy when we don't build a park. And then we purchased another 8.18 acres from the developer. They'll be happy with that, because they got over $240,000. But I think we have an obligation to keep our promises. We promised the citizens, we promised the state, and we promised the developers. I can't go back on that promise.
Just quickly, promises are important, and some, there's a history of, we promised to pave alleys throughout the city. People signed up, they got themselves on a list, they waited years, literally years, to reach the top of that list. Now, this is an old neighborhood, this is an old neighborhood issue. And at one point in time, the list was simply tossed out, and a lot of people never got their paved alleys, which I have been championing for years. So, you know, I do understand promises, I do support promises. The pension issue is not so much whether, but who, who will pay these astronomical, explosive pension funding in the future. That's the question. It won't be any of us. It will be these little children if they choose to stay in this city versus leaving the state, going to Florida, going to wherever else. And I hope they, I hope they do stay. But I agree with Stephen, pensions before parks, infrastructure before parks, and we've been told over and over by some of the same people who've commented tonight, needs before wants. And that is the reason for my vote tonight, but I appreciate all of you who came, especially bringing your children, that's downright heroic. And if you get your park, and I suspect you will, I'm happy for you, but I can't responsibly vote to fund a park before we meet our obligations. Thank you.
Jamie?
I agree. It's, for me, it's a matter of priorities. And priorities right now need to be on pensions and infrastructure. And we were told in the same budget session that we have upwards of $50 million worth of infrastructure bills coming towards us in the next few years, once we have our sewer plans completed and our road plans completed, that we don't know how to pay for right now. And so for me, this is just, it's putting priorities in place to saying, you know, we've got to figure out how we're going to be able to get people to work before we build any additional parks.
Okay, thanks everyone for their comments and discussion. This time, we're going to go ahead and take a, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your light until I, Jim?
I'll try to keep these to two or three minutes. Everybody's received some emails from me over the months and the phone calls, and I appreciate your reception to that. I'll try not to duplicate, a lot of good things have been said, but I do have some prepared remarks, I want them to be accurate, so I'll try to read them for the most part. But as I thought about this, I had a conversation with an alderman last week, and a comment was made, well, what else can be said? And I was a little taken back by that, but I thought, that's probably a good response, because we have talked about it long and hard. And so I kind of challenged myself, what else is out there that I might be able to help share the story? So let me share four things with you. A yes vote will recognize our appreciation to the neighborhood residents who have shown their patience, understanding, and awareness of why the final approval delays have occurred in the eight-year journey to finish this community park. The surrounding neighborhoods have worked cooperatively with each other and openly welcomed the inclusion of the entire community. They have worked very cohesively with the design firm of planning associates to reach a solid and unified consensus of the park features. Neighborhood representatives have communicated and appeared before us several times, always in a polite and very respectful manner. A yes vote will continue our strong relationships with the Department of Natural Resources in Springfield, with whom we have received $4 million in grants throughout our Bloomington community. The many supporting materials provided by staff clearly show the consequences that would result to the community if we would not finish the build-out this year. If the city of Bloomington were to be removed from any further grant considerations, it could impact future collaborative projects with other governmental partners, to include the town, the county, the airport authority, possibly our school districts, the CBB, et cetera. Thirdly, a yes vote clearly demonstrates our support of policy commitments as defined in our strategic plan, which includes our vision, our mission, our core beliefs, and our goals. A decision to support the finishing of this eight-year journey will further demonstrate alignment to our seven guiding principles. I think this is very important. The approval of the requested funds represents 1/3 of 1% of our budget, 1/3 of 1% of our budget. The amount requested represents roughly an equal-dollar amount to what has already been received from the donation of land from the developers in '05, the city's purchase of additional land in August of '07, and our acceptance of state of Illinois financial help in January 2009. And finally, a yes vote demonstrates our desire to maintain our reputation of Bloomington being a great place to live, work, and play, and further adds to our being a great place to live, work, and play, and further adds to our ability to attract and retain residents and businesses alike. During past public meetings, many residents have told us why they chose Bloomington to be their home. Tonight, we have an opportunity to validate their belief in the city of Bloomington, so I plan to vote yes. Okay, we're taking all the suspense out of the vote by announcing this, but let's go ahead and get to the conclusion of, of this, and I would like the clerk to, to take a roll call vote. A yes vote supports staff's recommendation to allocate up to, but not to exceed $600,000 for the construction of Eagleview Park, and implicitly to get that done this year so that we can get that 40% discount and have more money next year to spend on other things. So with that, go ahead and...
Alderman Millamway.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
No.
Alderman McGee.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Purcell.
No.
Alderman Fazini.
Yes.
Alderman Froen.
Yes.
Alderman Mathie.
No.
Alderman Sage.
No.
Okay, the motion passes five to four, so we're on the roll call. And again, keep in mind that, that this is a balance, in this case, I think we decided to do this, hopefully because it's gonna be cheaper to do it this year, and we can have more money next year. We'll have a million dollars next year to spend on something. But take a look, and David, keep us advised on where we are on, on the park. So we are at the end of the regular agenda. Given the lateness of the hour and the fact everybody's here, I'm going to forego comments for this evening. David, do you have something?
Several, Mayor, I, I do want to, if I could, invite R.T. Finney, interim police chief, to come forward, if you'd come up to the podium. Mayor and council, I want to introduce R.T. Finney. I have appointed him interim police chief, he's gonna be with us for a number of months as we continue through the recruitment process for a new police chief. Not only does, does Chief Finney come with, I think it's how many years as a chief of police in Carbondale and Champaign, approximately about?
Approximately 13 in the combined cities, 30 altogether.
Yeah. We're very fortunate to have R.T. with us, he, and as you may have read in the paper, some, couple of areas that we could really take advantage of his expertise, experience, as, as we finish a report coming to you next month on the downtown nightlife. I think it's important to point out that with Clay Wheeler attending the FBI Academy, we're down from three command-level positions to one with Bob Wall. At least with Mr. Finney coming on board, we're at two, but we're still down a critical command staff. And with a city as large, of a police department as complex, and with the issues we deal with, again, we have a, a proven police chief who's gonna be here to help see us through until the permanent police chief appointment is made. So I just wanted to introduce you to R.T., you'll be seeing him, see his emails, things of that nature. So I don't know, R.T., is there anything else you wanna do, just an introduction?
I didn't expect to speak tonight, but I, I appreciate it, I'm very proud to be here, thank you. I, I will do my best to do what needs to be done in the city of Bloomington to make it a better place. And in a few months, we'll be looking for the permanent chief, and I'll be ready to go home.
Well, welcome to the city of Bloomington, and hopefully we'll have an opportunity to get to know you. If you want to get to know me, you better hurry.
I understand.
Thanks, R.T.
Thank you.
I'd also like to make known, you may have seen in the paper, as part of our preparation for what is the, a final version of the solid waste report that Alex McElroy, the assistant to the city manager, is preparing. We also told you in the past that we were gonna have, bring to you some community input, citizen input. As you've seen, on April 10th and 11th, we have several public input sessions, we're trying to get some broad-based, some input to help us as we finish with some recommendations to bring to you. So this is consistent with the, the plan we had put together to ensure that the final report incorporated some citizen input. Also want you to be aware that as required by state law, within, bar, I think it's five, seven days? Within six days after adoption of the budget, we post on the city's website updated total compensation information for all our employees. In doing this, our deputy city manager, finance director, has been working with our employees to do a couple of new things to help improve that. One, we've reached out to the town of Normal to try and have the, both what they post, what we post, as consistent as we can, however, it, it won't be exact, but, you know, each city sometimes ultimately reverts to a certain but. Secondly, it's gonna be much more comprehensive, you're gonna see more information, so citizens, public at large, can see not only salary, but pension costs, and I think you'll be pleased, it is much more robust, there is greater amount of information and detail, and within that time period, that will be posted. So we did this last year, and that information was out there, and it'll be coming shortly as well. Also, just want to indicate that in two weeks, we are planning a special reception, more information will be given to you later, reception for our outgoing mayor, as well as any of our outgoing aldermen, like Alderman Purcell and others. So that will be before the regular meeting, we're planning putting that together. And then the other thing we're working on is, on May 1st, trying to plan on if this will work for all the newly elected, elected officials for a swearing-in ceremony, for both the new mayor and all those who have prevailed in the elections tomorrow. So we're looking to try and to plan that so that when we do meet in our first regular meeting in May, it's all the newly elected individuals, and we've got the swearing-in ceremony and the pleasantries taken care of on that day. So more information will be coming out to you on that. So Mayor, that's all I have to report on tonight, thank you.
Okay, and I just want to follow up on one thing you said, remember that our municipal elections are tomorrow? Please, if, you've had an experience here as to how this works, but remember, it all, it all starts with you. The people up here are people that you select, so be sure to do your job tomorrow and go out and vote.
Mayor, if I can, you know, the one statistics I wanted throughout, four years ago, we only had 20% of our registered voters' vote. And hopefully, you know, it's, it's nothing like a presidential election, but, you know, hopefully tomorrow will even be much better, but that's what it was four years ago, 20% voting for the elected officials that govern and make all the critical decisions, not only financially, but policy and ordinance-wise as well. Thank you.
Karen?
Could you give a brief update on the noise ordinance, please, David?
Yes, very much so. This Thursday, we have our Public Safety Aldermatic Committee that's meeting, one of the topics is the noise ordinance. The noise ordinance, as you might recall, we had a lot of good input last fall, Rosalie Dodson, our, our assistant corporate counsel, has been working on that, with all the other workload. We're to the point where we have an updated version, we're going to the Aldermatic Committee first, and then ultimately we'll bring that to the council. But I also want the council to know that I did speak with Chief Finney today, and I made sure that he could pass the word on to all the officers. We already do have existing ordinances we can use, you know, if there is noise complaints out there, so please, you know, I, I think any citizen, if there's, have a noise complaint, they can always contact the police department, and they'll look into it. So we have a lot of good ordinances on the books, and we've, I've asked him for the officers to, to, you know, even raise the awareness to be on guard for those kind of complaints and those issues as things have warmed up.
Judy?
Just a question, I had submitted several questions on clarification of my budget questions, and I'm assuming I'll still be able to get some answers, is that correct, David?
Yes.
I mean, they're, they're very concrete.
And some of those, yeah, some of those are in the answers you got tonight, and there's others, some of those are, I, I think we've been having some, what we've tried to define, maybe what you were looking for didn't mesh, but we're trying to do that both for yourself and Alderman Mathie.
Thank you.
If we had more personnel, maybe we could even be quicker in getting those responses to you.
As long as they're contract. Okay, I see no other comments for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.